Good evening, we call the Board of Selectmen regular meeting to order at 6:33 PM.
Can I add something to the agenda? Like to add the tax rebates?
Alright, I said it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You will add that as number four, 3.8, what's that? Stick it right there for our appointment. That's good, okay. Okay, first order of business secretaries before we have a regular meeting on July 8th. I forgot to send them, so we got them late, so we don't want to approve them today. We can do it later, but then we have a special meeting on July 14th.
Yeah, I don't know, are you good?
I have to change it.
Yeah, I have. Now, I just want to read you for number four.
Region four.
On my update on the mold.
Okay.
It says close out in the next few weeks. They're starting to close out. It's not going to be done in a few weeks because they're still, they're still doing some balancing of the pumps and the system, so. I didn't want people to think that it's going to be done in a couple of weeks, but they're going to start closing that.
So immediate change or would it be started to be closed down?
Correct.
Okay, so that would have a change?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to go down any changes at one, or do you want to?
Yeah.
At one, okay. I'll hold back to the amendment. I mean, the amendment of the last time, we didn't get the amendment there.
Oh, okay.
So, the amendment, it said, talking about the warning of the bids, we're talking about that. I had added a comment, Russell requested closer supervision of this project. That if we supervision, as opposed to people doing the work when the supervisor's on vacation. So that was a specific request.
But that wasn't in the original minutes of June 30th?
No, and that's what I asked to be added to it.
Oh, okay.
So that I'm just.
But my notes said you wanted the vote corrected. That is what I.
Okay. Do you want to add supervision? Of course I can. So we have a record of that, I appreciate that.
So far, two IOs.
I would say is the number seven of the Flatland Park. Should have, Russell requested maybe financial budgeting overview of the project. And then I am good.
You sure you said that? I wonder what else. Did you watch the meeting?
I know I asked for it.
Okay.
That's the second part of the session you're talking about? The bid opening?
I'm talking about Flatland Park.
Right, but on the bid opening for the move-in.
So she's saying that we're talking about, there's two sections on the Flatland Park.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wrote that wrong. It should be, I believe it should be in the, like, it was in number eight that we talked about, not number seven. In the bidding bids.
Okay, I'm confused. So when I got into bidding bids, that was?
Supervision.
The supervision?
Okay, that was on the Flatland Park?
Flatland, yeah, that's the supervision and the Flatland Park was the financial overview.
On a bid opening part?
On the project, on the project in general. I've asked for it about the time.
No, there's just, there's two sections on.
So I guess if I was going to put it somewhere, I would put it, you could put it at the end?
I'll put it in number seven.
Yes, it's seven.
Your thing was number five.
So.
So those are the changes, we've got eight, maybe an option to change. Do you want a second then?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of the changes?
Aye. And I recommend that we approve discussion of these minutes as presented.
Sure. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Audience and citizens, we have one online, we have four in person. Don online, do you have anything that you'd like to speak to the board about?
I'll stay up just a second, yes.
Okay. Okay, Steve?
I just want to say we had a very successful muster this year, and I want to thank everyone that participated in making that a wonderful event. It was well-attended, and I got a lot of comments from people who attended, and they were very appreciative of us.
Only thank you for the safety.
Thanks for your comments. I liked your roadblocks that you got over, it seemed done.
Yep, it's a federal grant for the state police, and they worked really well.
Yeah, very timely after what had happened in LA like literally the day before, so that was great, yeah. Anyone else you'd like to address the board? From the chair.
Yeah, I just wanted to double down on that. You know, I've been to several musters at the Sterling Society, Green Park and everything. This one went well, it was great coordination between the muster committee and us. It wasn't as much confusion as it was last year, and we thought it went a long couple of days, but it went really well. I'd love to see some people come out of town who make this an important destination.
I heard the parking sold out, it was sold out by Thursday or Friday?
Well, so, in the back, to a separate deal, the muster committee, they rent, they take our space behind the carriage house, and they rent that out to their overnight campers. So their overnight campers don't have to have cars over on Depp's Field. And then they pay us the payment, so that's what sold out. It was confusing to some public who thought our entire lot was sold out. It was just the pre-registered overnight people. We still have a problem, it's not a big problem, we still have a problem that people will come in for Friday night, pass the park, and then their car's still there on Sunday. And outside throwing and knocking on the window and saying, hey, come on. But, you know, that's what it is.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, 3A wants to be just added to the agenda of the approval of tax rebates. So I have three tax rebates submitted by the tax collector totaling $2,006.87. So I need a motion to approve tax rebates.
And my motion to approve the tax rebates as presented?
Certainly.
All in favor? Alright, appointment of Sarah McIlwicky to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate member, terms expire 12/26. Did anyone get a chance to?
I reached out to her, but did not get a call back.
Okay.
I just hope Doran, she would be a good fit with her background and her diversified resume here.
Yeah, she's been working for the Planning and, or the zoning office.
With Cibro.
So it was an old Cibro, yeah.
I think she'll do all.
I sent it to Tony, the chair, and we thought she would be a good fit. We thought if we appointed her as an alternate right now, and then if there is an opening, we could move her later.
She seems good, I would love to talk to her before, if they call in.
Okay. Do you want to hold it off, or do you want to hook me?
Do they need fines for running a community?
No, they're fine, we won't hurt.
They are, yeah, unless somebody steps down. Just for a while, speaking.
I'm just thinking if they have number one. If they don't, if they have number one, then I'm going there.
Then we can table that for next meeting?
Yeah, I'm good.
Everybody fine tabling? Okay, ordinances to consider. So revisions to our loitering ordinance. So loitering ordinances are really getting called into court. I've talked to Steve a little about this, and we already have one in the books, like, how can we tweak it to get it so our officers have a little more teeth behind it, is the idea. So that's still a discussion. The noise ordinance, I just want to say noes ordinance, but Tony did reach out and he had one kind of quick on the ready. So, but I tried to print it, and it's in Google Box, I wasn't able to print it, so I can send it to you. But that's something I think we should consider. I think having something on the books again might just be a nice tool for our officers or residents to say, we have a noes ordinance, and even if it's a little tricky to enforce, I think it gives us another tool in the toolbox. Just like the loitering ordinance, if we can get it to be a little stronger, so.
I look forward to seeing the other noes ordinance. I did, 10 minutes after the agenda was published, I'm going to say, what's this all about? But sometimes I've used it as a method to hold back on public, just to see that kind of thing. So let's find out. Shooting range is.
Oh, shooting range.
So let's, we need to find out what the words are and what it sort of works for us.
But we've had some residents that have issues with noes from Dayton or whatever, and again, it might be a little helpful tool for them to say.
It might help, like, that early morning, who's just fine with a motorcycle on another instance. So I think that's where booking, I look forward to it. I did before we moved to ordering, Carol, just wanted to go back on a brief review of the email that said. A couple of days ago, with our current loitering ordinance, right now, in that instance, there could have been a fine or something put on when the individual was on the street as it was reported, sleeping on the sidewalk. So, I, and I know Steve's here, and I respect Steve for saying that we don't necessarily have all the teeth we have. But I would encourage us, it may take weeks or months before we do our ordinance, get our words, write it, get it to a town meeting and all that, to actually work with the current ordinance and use it when we can on loitering.
Well, some of the highlighted areas, things I didn't think actually applied, because it said it was blocking public access, and.
It was on the sidewalk. You know, what I'm talking about, the last time, so the email line, or did you talk the last select meeting? You spoke about the individual sleeping on the sidewalk across the street and then waking up.
Yeah, she was.
So that was on the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, she was asleep on the side of a swisher car.
So that's.
Dangerous for herself, or something, pedal it down, then with on a scooter going down there.
So I'm glad we're looking at this, and are we getting, Tony's drafting something up, or looking at other towns?
No, just the noise. I've looked at a lot of other towns, and I've talked to trooper crafts, so Steve and I will have another conversation about this.
On, on, just to the way.
Just to see what the police input is. Again, all my research says that, you know, they've taken it to court a lot of times, and it is called into question about the First Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment. So they're hard to enforce.
I'm in noise, I afford the noise ordinance, but I don't want to go too far, handcuff someone that they can't walk more grass, you know, at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, or that's where I'm concerned there. You know, landlords have to make a living and have to walk more grass. My neighbors out there, it was up there, it was 7:00. But I just don't want to go too deep, I understand.
Doesn't that bother you? Maybe we should be here?
No, because it doesn't bother me, but if I'm out there, you know, doing my leaves, I hate it, I mean, head, and that's the fall I want to hear. You know, I just don't want to go to work.
Concess.
I don't want to handcuff our stuff where we're too stringent on the noise.
Absolutely. And that is, you know, one of the concerns, you keep adding ordinances, and it's like more and more rules, regulations, people, there's pushback.
You know, where Mike said, the people that make, you know, make it here with the loud motorcycles or a lot of cars, absolute, excellent, you know, hurt. You know, walk and mow the grass, you know, if they're working all day, come home late, they don't get the grass, but that's still in that.
And I know the enforcement is a tricky thing. You just got to be able to monitor the noise, and then it has to be sustained noise perhaps, and those kind of things. Like, there's a lot of, a lot of things that have to go into it, but, but at least we should entertain it, see what they have to do.
Well, we want to, well, we're on the ordinances, Carol, we've had a couple, go back to March. The short-term rental, like, and it was back and forth and getting meetings, and I asked the planning of zoning, and they're just going to give it up and connecting with our schedule.
I just re-tweeted emails two days ago, and said, planning is only, where are we at? Let's have a meeting, so. I think if we all, I think they've just been so busy with everything coming before us, but.
Maybe they're already on schedule.
So we can try to get that scheduled.
And they are working on the sidewalks at the last meeting.
Yes, yes. That is good. Okay, region four schools, security project and other updates. So I put that on there with others. The security project is ongoing. Building inspector had indicated that he thought they were a little behind schedule, but I don't know if this is going to impact anything. Just thought I'd keep it on there. And then I did reach out to the superintendent to say, we really want to have some meetings, and find out what's going on with the consultant that they hired to study the restructuring of the schools. So we're going to try to keep that in the front burner, so maybe we don't get too much pushed off.
It's probably still under, at February 8th. We wouldn't prefer to have an interim check.
So, I want to let you know, they did send a letter out to the parents, that's it. I just got from Jen a little while, a couple hours ago, that said, basically, the consultant's working, and they'll have the report, and, yeah.
I know it's not public time, but I'm on that committee for the safety.
Oh.
The safety thing.
Oh, the security project?
Yeah, I'm still on it from when I was a selectman.
Oh.
So we're having every, every other week or every, every week meetings. And then right now, they're bored to the walls, but they have to wait about seven days for all the concrete to cure before they. So if anybody goes up there now and doesn't like it, there's a whole lot going on, it's because they're waiting for the wall to cure. And I know that they found some issues when they started activating some drainage and whatnot, that they didn't know was there. And that screwed them up just a little bit. So they're making big plans, and they have plans for, if it's not done by the time school comes, would they play for safety and all that kind of stuff? I didn't want to interrupt, but.
But right on, right now, it's still considered kind of on, on the schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Maybe that was why we're trying something. Thank you. Alright, vacant land sales, just wanted to do an update. The selectmen had a meeting, a special meeting on July 14th. And we did put the vacant property, which was lot 6B, number 38, on the assessor's map, or, no, 38, assessor's map number 38. That did go back out for sale again. And those bids are due Wednesday, July 30th at 11:30 AM. We will open them at 12 o'clock. So again, if anyone's interested, please get your bins in.
Now, we, we spoke briefly today about the monuments and surveying and ill property. We've been out hiring another.
We did not. At that last meeting, we had, I was asked by both of you to reach out to Jacobson, get a price to see what that would be. So I did reach out to Jacobson, and said we'd like an estimate for putting the monuments in. And I believe he was sending the same gentleman that did it 11 years ago out there, to see if the rods were still in place, if they could find any of his original logs. But I don't have a price yet, so I, we haven't hired him. So I don't know if he's been out there, did he know today, no, circled back, but I didn't hear back before this meeting, so.
So they don't have to research, they're just putting in monuments?
That's what I'm just.
Don't want to have to duplicate it, if I don't have.
Yeah, no, you were just, you guys asked me to get a price to see what that would cost. Okay, transfer station advisory committee. So we had a great discussion today, we had a meeting, and we just all want to say great job to this committee, they've been working very hard, working on rewriting our transfer station ordinance, which is number one solid waste ordinance. So any changes that we propose to them, we're going to make, and then we will send it to our attorney for review, we'll review it again, send it to the attorney, and then it's going to go to probably a town, open meeting, you know, just so people can come in and review it, see the originals, see the changes, proposals. But it'll get obviously voted on by the town at some point if we're going to move it forward. But again, thank you to that committee, if you guys think we did a nice thorough job and got a reading today.
I think it was helpful to have the committee there, to have the three of us there, and to have the actual workers there. We just gave it along with that. We took it from concept to practicality.
Well, when you have the better there.
Doing the work for them.
So we doing the work, and it's not hearsay, it's coming from a person, no. But both of them and Eric gave us good information, it's more than we needed.
It was productive, and I think, again, having, having it in person is better than just here. Could you review this and get back to your comments, because there was just a lot of nice verbal exchange in there. Library issues update, so I just wanted to circle back. I've been trying to meet with the library personnel, and then we are going to set up a big group meeting. We have a facilitator coming, that's an HR consultant. See what, you know, if we can just work out, here everybody's side of everything, and kind of work, so we have some smooth sailing going forward, get all the parties to work together. There's a storage issue in the community room, and that work will begin soon. We had offered to.
One more, start an actual.
To put in the new cabinets for the storage. And I did, I went over to see Susan, and I was in her office, and it was freezing in there, and her air conditioning unit was working, and so was her window unit. And I said, my gosh, this is really cold, and she said, oh, I didn't even know that was working, so I still had her air conditioner, she had a bolt button. But he was, so I called him, and he was able to fix two of the units out of the three. The third is waiting for parts.
Give it up, Nick.
So at this point, the library seems pretty cold.
Does he think he can get the parts?
Yes. He said he can find the parts, it's just a little harder to find, but he said by no means can he not find the parts, which is kind of obvious to him.
What goes good, because I think the information that we were provided, that the parts were optional to get.
That's how I said it, and he said, no, 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 I can get them, I just don't, I have to search, but they're out there, it's just people don't keep them in stock, I guess, because it's an older.
Do we have a sense of the remaining life of the system?
He did not, he did not, kind of ensured that, give me that, but he thought he could fix it and keep it going, so I don't know how long, but.
Could something actually be put on? That's a very hard idea, to have a plant down the road, because you want to put so many band-aids on them, it's going to break.
Do we have a sense of timing for all the senators coming in, we have that session?
Well, I wanted to meet with all parties, but I had a little snag yesterday trying to meet with the meeting, so I was just going to ask Cheryl to come next week.
Probably next week.
She can't do Thursday evening, so it'll be a different evening, which is our local, so maybe even Tuesday. But yeah, I want to dial you out soon, everybody, or so, as we all do. Let's see. Muster 2025, just wanted to reiterate what Steve said, actually, great job to the committee, especially Roberta. She was amazing to work with, she was so organized, and whatever we told her she needed, she just jumped and got it done. And I wanted to give a shout out to Roberta, the new assistant for selectmen. She handled all the underprudence, and we had, she reiterated all the rules to them, and it didn't seem like anybody broke the rules, except the guy selling the cotton candy, apparently, kept walking around. So, that cotton candy guy, I was the only one to follow.
He didn't sell them either.
Well, he kept walking with a gray, you know, you got to stand still, and you walk down the field, and they kick him out of the field, and, you know, so. But anyway, so great job to the muster, and of course, the weather was perfect, so, we had a lot to do with it. And we all totally in charge of self-walking, so. Okay, audience and citizens, so we can address the board, we got a lot of people, and keep it scheduled.
Waking up. While some of these ordinances may seem cumbersome, to whether it's us or anyone else. I think given the state of people's actions nowadays, we're best being proactive instead of reactive. Quickly with the loitering homelessness, I guess hearsay from a good source, Clinton has experienced pretty high volume of homelessness.
Who did?
Clinton.
Clinton, okay.
And I guess, I'm not sure what they're doing, but they seem to be being very proactive, moving it along. Someone said to me, realistically, you know, homeless people, homeless people, and it really stinks. You know, you have to have a lot of empathy, but they have to go somewhere, and if they're not going into structured homes, or with services that are going to accommodate them, they're going to move to different towns. So I think we should be on the cusp of knowing how to handle that, if one turns into three, turns into eight. So having that, and as far as the noise ordinance, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. If you Google noise ordinances in the state of Connecticut, very, very common, they're user-friendly, and they're not chastising people for, you know, mowing their lawns at, you know, 4:00 AM. But there are parameters, and they're realistic. I think a lot has to do with the illegal exhaust, and mixed-use commercial and residential areas. You'll see the biggest teeth are in the cities, where one of their biggest problems was refuse. Back in the 70s, I think I've said this before to you guys, it was early as 3:30 AM, they're in the post office slamming cans, because they want a lot of them to do it, and that's suggested. So these are things that I think for quality of life, like Carol said, we should have them on the books. In a commercial zone, all of a sudden, business pops up, and they're making bongo drums and testing them at 3:00 in the morning. You need to be able to react quickly. The state DEEP is the one that does that. So they have a monitoring algorithm, and this, and towns do share equipment, and officers can get that equipment and do stops, or test property that is, could be in the dust or something.
Anyone else?
Yes? I'd like to address both of those ordinances as well. The loitering, I haven't read what you have proposed at all, but I know one of the loitering incidents happened on private property behind my house, and so I just want to make sure that that loitering ordinance or whatever it does cover, you know, it's a large piece of property behind me. So it, and they don't necessarily monitor it, but I just want to make sure that that's covered as well, and it's not just loitering on public property, but loitering on open spaces that are privately owned. So I just wanted to point that out. The other thing about noise ordinance is, I think it's a great idea to have in town ordinance. Many small towns have noise ordinances that are more restricted than the state, which I think makes sense, because we're not Hartford, we're not Vittletown, we're not Danbury or any of those. So I think that as being a small town, I think having stricter noise ordinances is appropriate for a small town. The other thing that I wanted to point out too, is you're talking about lawn equipment and lawn mowers and stuff like that. I may be one of the few people in town, I actually have a robotic lawnmower, it doesn't make any noise. So I just want to make sure that when you put those restrictions in on lawn equipment and things like that, that you take into consideration that there are options that are quiet, that won't disturb neighbors and stuff like that, so.
Good to know, good to know. The one that we were looking at was the old Sabre one, the noise ordinance, if anybody wants to pull that up. And again, we have a loitering ordinance already on the books, but we were looking to see how you could get a tad more teeth. Help our officers see for some of those things. Anyone else have anything? Okay. I will take the motion to adjourn, let's see if the board finds.
I have a long shift, I have to just ask the follow-on. Is everything actually taken on the books, something to do with the lawnmower? It's been recorded in January, and one of the, not the free time, just go and access it, get it cleaned up, get on.
I don't wish I was looking at any of them. I have a little agenda. I don't wish I was, okay, maybe he was looking at, I mean, I don't know, so Rupert, I looked at it, during an emergency, it's an emergency, but I will see what they came up with for the loss. Okay, question, oh, Don, do you have anything? Okay, make the motion to adjourn, that's seven and three, second. All those in favor?
Aye. Good evening, everyone, this is the July 2025 Record Meeting in the Big River Board of Finance, at the moment, we have three voting members, we will soon have four, which will give us a quorum. So, with that in mind, I'm going to use my executive authority, which I may not actually have, and move the agenda around, and have Jerry Roberts join us at the table, please join, Jerry's been asking for an opportunity to up the Board of Finance for some time, Jerry has quite the impressive resume, we can identify him with many things, but we will simply do it as president of the historical society.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I'm here with Jim Olson, who is also trustee with the Historical Society, and we both serve on the House and Grounds Committee as well, most of you know, we're a small outfit, driven 100% by volunteers, most of whom are probably over 60, although we have a few spring chickens, we have some people in their 50s involved, so that young blood, so I wanna introduce a concept, this is not a formal dog and pony show, we can put that together later, so, basically, we're here to ask the town to consider an ongoing support for the Historical Society, like takes place for the library, I mean, not the library, the cemetery, other towns, the town of Westbrook 100% supports the Historical Society, they're all their properties, all their operating expenses, so I just wanna run through a quick bullet point list, that a lot of people, and maybe even people at this table are not aware of, so we've been keepers of the town's history and heritage and treasures since 1938, at no cost to the town or taxpayers, we keep all of the town's history and heritage and artifacts, we are open to the public for free, we're open to school groups, we want them to come, we maintain a large green space, and historic housing grounds, which is a major part of the town's character, you know, part of the not overdeveloped part of the town, we own a significant portion of Debit Field, and most people don't know that, if you're at Debit Field, and you go to the goalposts at the far end, then you walk 10 feet back towards South Main, we own everything from 10 feet in front of the goalposts all the way back, and the, we let the town use that, and have let the town use that for over 16 years, at no cost, that's where the people, for the muster camp, that's where they set up their tents and live for three days on our property, and we never paid a penny for it, so, I think a lot of people don't know this, we provide, we get no support for aging infrastructure or improvements, except we did give an ARPA help for the roof of the carriage house, but we get nothing from the town, I think, most people think, and I've heard that undoubtedly, most people think we're supported by the town, and they figure, why should I become a member, why should I cough up $20 to become a member, because of course, we're supported by the town, we're right in the middle of the town, but we're not, and unfortunately, people here, they're surprised, so, we are facing several major infrastructure repairs, we believe that Light Fountain Hill, we deserve some town support, to help keep our buildings, grounds, and mission alive and well, so, aside from just staying open, beating infrastructure costs, electricity, we have no air conditioning, air conditioning, without air conditioning, our several hundred-year-old oil paintings and artifacts obviously suffer, and we can't get volunteers anymore to serve for us in the summer, because who wants to sit in the hothouse, so we have, we went and after Olson, went and purchased some, and donated some of those standalone air conditioners, but of course, they're sucking off electricity, so, it isn't just a big empty building that has no expenses, our bleach shed, if you're not familiar with the bleach shed, it looks like a greenhouse, it's what they used to bleach the panel keys on, and there used to be about six major bleach sheds, over 300 feet long throughout the town, this section that we have, this 20-foot section, according to this Missouri Institute, is the last bleach shed on earth, and we have it, yet it's been out there, subject to covered weather, it's old, it, we tried to come up with, we put tarps over it every year, and then the tarps get ripped and blow away, and we like to put a shed roof over it, it's an important thing to save, and, you know, it would be great to have a wonderful barn-style pavilion over it, that then could lead it off, reach your future. The carriage house itself, the carriage house is a wonderful asset, but it's in grave physical danger, we've just come to realize, this old post and the infrastructure, there are some, we need an engineer to look at it, there are some things that are failing, you know, we've talked about fixing it up, so we can do rentals again and so forth, but the actual physical standing of the beams and stuff needs to be, need to be addressed and looked at, we've talked a lot about a ramp for our front porch, so handicap people can get in, and we got a ramp donated, although it's very antiquated ramp, but before we could attach it, we found out, the people that we asked to help attach it, said they will not attach it, because our old front porch is rotten, it's just rotten, so we figured, we're gonna go into a rotten front porch, so, operational costs to keep us alive might be about $30,000 a year, then you add on that, trying to correct some of these long, long deferred maintenance things, now our income sources, our income sources is the lucky grant that we're able to get, but of course, all volunteers are going to get a grant writers, we have a few people who are after them, and sometimes we give some things. Membership, we have less than 200 members, and again, I put that down to the fact that most people don't think that we're in need, because they see us there, we look pretty good, it's a beautiful building, we keep the grounds mowed at our expense, and people don't think we're in trouble, and so why should I, why should I become a member, and then, and that's pretty much it, we used to, and I know a lot of people wonder why we don't do rentals anymore, so we used to do rentals, we were the cheapest place in town to rent, and everybody knew that, so no one wanted to pay real money to rent the place, so we did birthday parties, we did little gatherings for 250 bucks, when Jeff and Linda ran it, sorry.
Hostelaire.
Yes, when they ran it personally, as volunteers, and they literally ran it, the expenses were low, we still had to pay 250 dollars for cleaning, after someone abused it, once they stopped doing it, we tried to make a business out of it, we tried, we hired a young woman, we gave her a small but decent amount of money to try to drum up business, and we told her we would give her 15% of everything she made above what we had made in the past, and a year of doing that, we lost $2,000, and so I said, we're not gonna, we're not gonna lose $2,000 to give people the cheapest place in town to do their birthday parties, so we have an active committee that's looking at other historical societies, other historic sites, how they run their rentals, a lot of people won't do it, just because it's hard to do, but that's the reason that everybody asks, talk on, we're not renting now, because we were actually losing money by renting, so what we're asking the town to consider, is after, since 1938, we've been doing a lot for the town, letting our land be used, maintaining all of the town's history and heritage, educating the public, people are free to stroll our grounds, and then, of course, we use the Debit Field, I really would ask that you would consider putting us in budget as an operating expense, we can talk about how that would work, and how much it should be, we're not asking for a gigantic wingfall of infrastructure income, we're looking for something that lets us keep going, because all we're doing is begging, all we're doing is begging and defer maintenance, and again, I just, I happen to, you know, having run the New England Air Museum, and run the River Museum, I'm very familiar with how nonprofits work, and then, in my retirement, got involved here, it's great place, we've got a great bunch of volunteers, dedicated people, our biggest fundraiser of the year, believe it or not, is parking cars for the muster, and our strawberry social is popular, and then we do tea, but we provide lots of public services, we have authors who come in and do book talks, we have lots of other public programs, and we, the way we promote those is it's free to members, and for everybody else, it's $5, but if you don't have the $5, come on in anyway, you just hope that someone's gonna put in $5, so we make no money doing that, but we've offered throughout the year, a number of admission presentations for the community, so, having said that, I really believe we deserve to be considered for support, because just like, just like the cemetery, if we fail, if we went under, what's gonna happen to our property, I mean, someone might build a portable housing there, but, you know, we, and I say we, several generations of ancient volunteers have kept this place going, by goodwill and the skin of their teeth, and I would love it if the town would consider becoming part of this. And happy to answer any questions, happy to make a more formal presentation another time, but I've been talking about this for maybe a year or more, we just wanna introduce the concept, and most to let people know, whereas most people think we're supported, we're not, so, any questions at all?
I have a question, you and I have talked, and you're gonna look into how the property is deeded, or moved to the historical site, is there a way that the town might entertain buying debit field portion over there, so that you have revenue, and then the town just increases the park, and you take that over, and again, you get some funding.
Yeah, and we've, ourselves, it was kind of a crazy suggestion a couple of months ago, but it was pretty complex, of the town giving us Debit Field, and us giving the town all of our property back in the woods to the railroad tracks, I guess the thought being that back there, affordable housing could be built, and then we would own Debit Field, but of course, we wouldn't really own Debit Field, we couldn't sell it, we wouldn't be able to charge the town to use it, I'm sure, it was, it was an interesting concept, the idea of the town purchasing or leasing Debit Field, you know, maybe that, maybe part of an ongoing support mechanism, is the town gets a long-term lease on Debit Field, we have looked, I know that the state legislature, this was tested a few years back, said it couldn't be sold, the deed, we looked at the deed, it took us a long time to dig it up, but we finally dug it up, and I think it's open to interpretation, basically, the deed of gift was that the property needed to always be used for historic preservation and education, so it couldn't be sold to, maybe in something else.
That goes back to when Lieberman was secretary, attorney general, when they determined that we couldn't.
Right, the attorney general's office looked at it.
Because that would be great to go.
No, no, I get it, I personally think it's vague enough to look at again, but I think a way around that would be a lease, you know, we're not using Debit Field, it's funny, parks, some, some parks and rec, when I mentioned that that, that we, when they were gonna do the Big Rock concert last year, and they wanted the park on our property, they wanted the park on the Debit Field part of our property, and we said, for 60 years, we've been giving you the use of that field, but now if you're gonna make money off of it, if you're gonna rent out parking spots to this concert, on our property, we deserve to make some money at last.
And they wanted to use our ground, around the house.
Absolutely, because they thought.
Exactly.
And they were indignant that we would want some money for them to use our own property for them to make money, and I just think it's people not understanding that it is ours, and I personally think we graciously let the town use it for anything that they want to, and what do the parks and rec say, we've been mowing your lawn for free, you should be paying us, well, you only mowed the lawn because you wanna use it, you know, we let it go to others, but yes, I think that land is something that if we can't sell it, certainly it could be, you know, part of making everybody feel better, is that we get an annual support mechanism, and part of that support mechanism is the town's full use of Debit Field, I mean, that's, that's open for a discussion between us and people.
Well, it's because nobody knows, I didn't know it, until I got really involved with the trustees, that that piece of debit field and the land behind, well, I'm a historian aside, I had no idea, you know, and most people in town don't know, and the fact that the town's been using it for decades, and decades and decades, you know, a part back, you know, that sand pit back there was famous back in the day with musters and all that kind of stuff, you know, that's now, that's our property.
That's why we don't lease.
And that's, that property is problematic, because it's remote, I mean, I thought of putting hiking trails in there as an Eagle Stop project, but now you put, invite the public back there, now you've created a tracking nuisance possibly, because who's gonna monitor what happens back there, it's, it's a tough piece of property, but, and it's property that doesn't do us any good, I guess the one thing that we have, I mean, not the one thing, one of the things that we have been doing for the last 80 odd years, is preserving green space in this town, we preserved, it was now a lot of woodlands back there, and we've protected this massive lawn, which, which, again, remote and maintained, is looking nice, and I think it would be great as part of a package to work out deals where, you know, we're not allowed to do on our own property, we're not allowed to have a green market, an art festival or something, because the town's regulations mean that every single vendor has to take out a separate license with the town, rather than let us use the town to make income, and I'm sure there's reasons for all of that, I just think, most people have never looked at details, and just assumed we're fine, but we're not really fine, we're literally rotting, and we have unbelievable precious things, and I'm talking about oil paintings that are worth tens of thousands of dollars each, as well as many, many other things, we have the entire history of the town, and if anybody hasn't been there, I would love to turn up our temporary air conditioning and invite any of you guys to come and see what we have and what we do, but I would love to, I would love to try to move this forward somehow, at least now you know that this is something that we are thinking about, and we, we're not beggars, we're part of this town, we've maintained this property for a long time, and I think it's part of the town's vibe, you know, and the ground crack, if you use it.
We always said, Jerry, about the front porch, you know, if it's not looked at now, it's like a cancer, it's just gonna keep spreading, deteriorating, deteriorating, and if it hits the structure of the building.
We didn't know that, until we've gotten, you know, like always, go around, try to find carpenters that will volunteer to help us attach the handicap ramp, which was donated to us, but it's totally obsolete, it's an old spire, it's, it's, it's an antique, but it's all we have, and then we figured, let's get it put on, and the people that we brought in to look at us, and we, I'm sorry, you won't work on your, we won't do that, because the porch is about to fall down, so, that's that. Thank you so much for giving us the time, and we will keep doing what we're doing, and we're very proud to be part of this town.
Thank you. And, that's it, I think Jerry has given us a little bit of a play, I'd like to invite Jerry back during our budget time, where we put this on the list of all the things we have to pick from, and decisions are good, that's what a budget's all about.
We could put together more, you know, I can put together dog and pony shows if required, but these are the basics.
What would you give if you kind of had projects, like the porch, or the smudge and air conditioning?
Yep, and I would wanna delineate infrastructure projects, from, and what it costs to just keep us there, and then what things are needed to keep us from falling down.
It was just, two years ago, we saved enough money to redo the driveway.
Yeah.
The driveway was potholes, and it was a disaster, and we got enough money to do that, and there was, like Jerry said, there's, we've been deferring these things down, the money that we get through grants and memberships and stuff like that, pays the electricity, pays the, you know, the gas, you know, all that stuff, and it would allow, the AG says 60 plus, I'd say the average age is 70 plus, and, you know, we're all getting up there, and we, we're retired, but it takes time to do this stuff, and they have other things to do, and, so these things get kicked down, kicked down the road, and if, if we could do something with the town to help us meet the operation part of it, then we could do fundraisers and things like that, and maybe for a porch, or, or maybe, you know, the way, you know, we need, it's 50, I don't know what should be the, maybe the porch, but there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, that's been kicked down the, down the road, not in, not in a malicious way, it's just because of money and volunteer time.
But the building looks nice from the street, it's a good thing, people think we're fine, but again, a brief background.
There is legislation in the state of Connecticut, the real states, that you're referring to the cemetery, legislation in the state says if a Legislation in the state says if a cemetery is about to be abandoned, the town has to take it over, which is why we were required, or why we certainly need thirty-five. So it was not with great cleave, we took that all, you know? And just to keep on, but you, you had to be here when the elderly housing was being considered. It was considered back then, we actually went to rep, on that very point. And we put it in the sand trap and the town said, no, it was historical.
And that might have been where it ended up, at the state with the attorney general.
Ah, that's correct.
I think that was, it went way back to then if they determined that it couldn't be done.
That's correct.
But again, I, I've looked at the deed. And I personally think that there's, I mean, I don't know if you're smarter, someone smarter than me. But we don't want to give, I mean, the few assets we have, we don't want to give away. But I think a lease arrangement, I mean, we're already giving the town have, I mean, a fifth of debit field for free. We have been for a long time. And just no one's thought of the fact that, that we need some help. And, and we're, you know, we're part of this town. We, we are the town's history and heritage. And we'll all volunteer. And I can attest that several of us are over seventy years old. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And Jim, the boy. Seventy is the new turkey. It's just a number.
If I get older, make that number small.
I tell my kids who are in college that every day. Thanks, guys.
All right, now that we have a full, lively board, let us return to item one. We've got minutes from the June twenty-fourth meeting that I would like people to say we accept. Can I have a motion? So can I have a second? Thank you. Although this is favorable, I say, thank you. Although as opposed to get reprimanded by the town clerk, I would say although as opposed. Thank you. All right, citizens here in the, we'll keep on moving. Tommy, it is your, it is your time in the sun.
Okay, thank you. Tim, do you have the deposit report? I think I left one. All right, thanks. And I know Tara, I think Tara had sent one to everybody too. Okay, so I'll start off with a quick news. There's no change in our interest rates. Interest rates have stayed the same at four and four percent with the exception of the capital improvements borrow. Because that's limited to what we can actually get as far as interest on that. Because if, those are proceeds from a bond issue. So that's three percent. So they're holding steady, so that's, that's very good news. Another item on, on the report, you'll see that instead of Guilford Savings Bank, we have Ascend, called Ascend Bank. And that's, that went into effect on July, July first. General fund balance, you'll see that we're at a million, two fourteen, seven eighty-five. That's, that's very high. However, we had, we have about a million, sixty-four thousand in accounts payables. So that's why that is so high right now. I like to keep around maybe four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that account. The deep river share of the regional budget or the school budget this year is six hundred and forty-nine thousand, four fifty-two a month. We'll be paying eight, eight million, two hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and eight dollars a year. That's the deep river share. We're actually less than last year, about twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. We were, last year, we were paying six hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-three a month. There is an additional, in August and April, there's an additional two hundred and fifteen thousand, four seventy-six in interest payments that are actually included in that six forty-nine, four fifty-two. So two times a year. So that additional money is added to that in those particular months. We're responsible for eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Our general fund account balances are up two million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand from last, from last month. All right, if you look at the two thousand, twenty-two, the capital improvements borrow, we had known this first was made during the last month. You see the balance right now is four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five twenty-two. We did earn interest of a thousand, sixty-three dollars and seventeen cents for that, for last month, that, that three percent interest rate. The town did make, on July tenth, the town did make a pension payment to Voia Financial. That was for four hundred and ninety-three thousand, three eighty-nine oh one. The town employees' total amount was four hundred and thirty-four thousand, four dollars and eighty-nine cents. The firefighters' portion was fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, I'm sorry, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and twelve cents. Our ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan account, their, our total was reduced by three thousand, five hundred and one dollars and ninety-four cents from last, from last month. So right now, the original amount that we receive for the ARPA funds was a million, three fourteen, ninety-eight. And we dispersed a million, twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. So now we're at, you see the balance on this report at three hundred and two thousand, one seventy-three. But that total amount has been committed. So it's just a matter of one that's actually going to be dispersed. Made two wire transfers during the last month. One on July seventh for a million, three hundred and fifty thousand. One on July fourteenth for five hundred thousand, a total of a million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That went from Citizens Bank General Fund to the Liberty Bank Money Market Account so we can get that four and a quarter percent interest. And that's really the monies that have been coming in from tax, for the most part, tax, tax revenues. Our ECS monies, the Education Equalization Grant monies that we receive every year for this new fiscal year from July first, two thousand, twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-six. We'll receive a million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and five dollars. That is a little bit less than we received last year. Last year, we received a million, six seventy-six, oh, one oh five. So it's twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars less that we'll receive during this fiscal year than we received last fiscal year. So our first payment that we'll receive is on October thirty-first, two thousand, twenty-five. We'll receive a quarter of that total amount. So we'll get four hundred and thirteen thousand, six oh one twenty-five. And we'll get our second installment on January thirty-first, two thousand, twenty-six. That will be another quarter. And then our third and final installment will be received on April thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-six. And that will be for eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two oh two fifty. Our short-term investments, the interest we received from the last fiscal year. The town had budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars. We did receive an interest, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, three sixty, fifty-one. So we're over the budgeted amount of, for two hundred and twenty-six thousand, three sixty, fifty-one cents. So we're up five hundred and eleven percent. Five hundred and eleven point six oh percent. So budgeted for this, for the next fiscal year is for a hundred and fifty thousand. So it's up from ninety-five thousand dollars from last year. So hopefully, we'll be able to, the interest rates will stay high. We'll be able to do much better than that. So we'll see what happens. For our bond issue payments, oh, one thing too. But I understand we did get a Connecticut Department of Housing Technology grant?
We did, for thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Has that been received? Or no, it's just?
No, I haven't signed the contract yet. I was having legal, you know, legal. What's the grant for?
It's called a technical assistance grant.
For housing? It was Connecticut Department of Housing, they ordered us the grant. What can we use it for? We're going to use it for studying where we can put affordable housing, like what sites we have, that's working. For the plan is on our regional housing representative. Daniel Smith was very active in getting that grant.
Last thing, just our upcoming bond issue payments. Sewer construction bond, which we actually pay by check every month. We have a payment due on July thirty-first for sixteen thousand, nine fourteen, seventy-six. That original, that, that spent for twenty years. So originally, it was for three million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand principal. And the total cost with interest is four million, fifty-nine thousand, sixty-six dollars. Where we, we, we only have nine payments remaining. When that July thirty first payment is made. So this countdown continues. And right now, the balance that we owe is a hundred, when that payment is made, is a hundred and fifty thousand, nine seventy-one. So that's kind of free up quite a bit of money for us. And that's actually paid off, and that will be paid off next April. The Kirtland River Street sewer project expansion to the USDA, there was a payment that was made on June twenty-third. So that, when that payment is paid, the balance on that particular bond issue is five, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. The, there's two bond issues that are actually due in August, August fifteenth, for each of those. One is for the capital improvements bond issue. And we'll be paying a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars on that one. Nine hundred, ninety-five thousand will be for principal. And eighteen thousand, five twenty-five will be for the interest. And the, and the other one that's due on August fifteenth is the energy upgrade, which is for the actual town hall, the library, and the elementary school. That's a principal and interest payment of thirty thousand, one thirty-eight, seventy-five, which is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred in principal and nineteen thirty-eight, seventy-five in interest. So that's all I have.
Some of your conversations with banks, what indication do they give you? If any, interest rates are going to go?
Actually, they were, and, you know, it's funny you mention that because I did talk to Guilford, Guilford Savings Bank or Ascend Bank with Heidi Samuelson. And she, right now, she feels pretty good about the rates where they are. So hopefully, that will stay.
So that's what I read, if it wants to stay steady.
Yeah, that would be nice.
If it goes down and.
Yeah, that would be nice for us anyway. And that end, I mean, as far as any interest that are, yeah. So, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Carol, do you wish to take the line?
I don't really think, I can't think of what we were going to talk about. But I did get from Tara, our assistant in the finance department. She had mentioned that she wanted to look into getting the time card, you know, get rid of the time clocks and do a different way to do payroll, which then I guess you can get the app on your phone. You can punch in, if you will, when you're in the building or within, you know, so much radius and that sort of thing. So it would really take, she basically thinks it'll save her about five plus hours of doing payroll, if not more. So it will save. She did get something from EDP, which is our current payroll provider, for forty-six, four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
How much?
Four thousand, six hundred and eighty. And she would like us to consider it, even though it wasn't in the budget because of, she thinks it would be quite a time saver. It's technically a good, a lot of the departments now actually write, hand write cards. We do have a time clock here for some of the employees. So it seems like quite a few departments are putting in their time in different formats. And then she has to hand enter it. You know, she's entering all things by hand, so.
There's an incremental cost in the budget to go to that kind of time.
We did talk about it. I didn't know, I was just trying to look to see if it was in here.
It came out of the, Amberie would have been willing to put it in. I don't remember capital cost, but I do know there's an incremental cost.
I remember Amberie was kind of, talked about putting it. I didn't know if it actually got in. I was trying to look at the numbers. Because she, we saved on the salary line, so right now, her line last year, this four year, was not over.
It may be something for the new finance person when they come in to take a look at. That's, look at the process and look at the system. See if, it's a sheet, right?
It is, and she, she was for this. We had spoken about it briefly. Because a lot of the places now, they're, they're mostly places that are away from the time clock.
Yeah, yeah. People would use the time clock, or that's your sort of?
We have four or five employees that use it. And then we have like all the highway guys actually sign a sheet of paper. And I think W P C A, you know, if they're not salary, they also have a time sheet they submit. So it's a lot of transferring numbers from one thing to another, and then you have to check it. So, you know, it's time consuming. So this would give you a lot more control. And you could quickly look at your sick time, your vacation, and all that without, again, going up to finance and asking to verify things. So you'd have kind of control of your account.
It's a lot of that.
Is this an ask for the money, or do we just go ahead?
Uh, well, it's an ask for the money, but if, I'm trying to look to see if it's.
We ought to take a few moments. I think there's money in the budget. And I don't know whether it was for capital or just incremental cost. Money in the budget, recognize this, this going to technology.
I, I think it's a smart thing to do. The point I was making is the new person that comes in is, you know, the Xiaomi parent, if he's a right system, or the community, there's a dozen different app systems for anti.
There is, it's just that that's already does our payroll. So Tara, she, she's been kind of researching it. It made sense to stay with the same company that is doing our payroll, but there are other payroll providers. You are correct.
Yeah, and other apps that link to it.
Well, you can never do a little more research. She just gave me this for me, so we have to do that. Because at the time, we talked about the cost, like we didn't really know what that cost. So it is a large sum of money. So if anyone would like to look at this contract that just got put on my table. I have that, except for. And of course, the cost is based on how many employees, so we don't have less than fifteen. Okay, thank you. What else do we have?
The only other thing is, I was not at the June meeting. When I understand, it was discussed at a higher level. The whole project, the project of fraud, was a hundred. So I'm hoping to look at it and tell you budget on that. So make sure we don't have over that. So I'm hoping that'll happen in the next couple of years.
It will. We needed to wait for the bid opening, which just happened, to see what the bids came in on. We have a bid opening for the new concession and restrooms. And they came a lot higher than what was projected a couple of years ago when we put in for the Steve grant. I think some of our costs are going to be the plumbing, electrical. That would be part of it. I mean, the town has to pick up about a hundred thousand with that Steve grant. So we can chip away at it with some of those aspects of the project. And then whatever we have left, maybe we can put towards. The idea was to get pavilion as well as the restroom concession stand when we put out for the grant, or got the grant. But the costs have just gone up so much that now we don't have, we're not going to have a lot left to do a pavilion. So the suggestion was then maybe we put in for another Steve grant and see if we can then kind of propose it as we would finish the project for the pavilion. Kind of combine some of the monies from the Steve. But I can work up those numbers again. We just got the opening bid last hour, Wednesday or Thursday, so.
Excellent. Are we bound to a precast structure? Or is it still?
Well, that was what got bid out, so we have to then go back up to bid.
Do value engineering? Just, it's nice because it's boom, one shot, it's done. But you're paying for that.
Right. I, I don't know why that got proposed. I mean, I helped run that grant years ago, but I wasn't, that was like the engineering design. And I'm not sure why that got chosen as that.
No, I'm just looking to get the most bang for our buck. As, you know, leaders here, and if we can find, get the same product for a lesser price, I'm going to scramble for it.
So our town engineer is going to then send us the top three bidders in what they recommend. We do not have that yet from the, but I was at the bidding. So the prices came in, what was the lending one? It was three?
Three ninety something.
Like basically, four hundred thousand was what came in.
What's the grant amount?
The grant amount was for six hundred altogether.
Including the down portion, the hundred?
Including the other.
Down portion, the hundred thousand, the down portion?
Yes, I think that was the entire thing. So we have about five hundred outside of what we were.
And we budgeted a hundred thousand. And it's all set.
Okay. Then we capital it or? If you're finished to watch this, I'm going to pass this to Jackie in a moment. Jackie had introduced to me the concept that some towns have applied for grants or have cameras. Jackie had introduced to me the concept that some towns have applied for grants, or have cameras, and with that introduction...
I already talked about it.
Oh, you have, we'll talk more about how they...
Traffic cameras, so the EDC has been talking to me a lot about the traffic cameras, that kind of DOT now is putting in some towns. You have to apply, you have to then get a traffic study done, you have to get approved. But the EDC talked about it a lot at the meeting, I believe, which...
Can you make a summary why the EDC would find traffic cameras interesting?
Well, I can address that, I've talked to Stacy, and she and I both were on a call with the police chief in this town, discussing more about it, it was in the newspaper, how the town of Washington, I think, had some first that did expand it. First of all, it's been quite a while, the towns were discussing the problem of speeding. And that adds to quality of life, and adds to attracting business to businesses and not at the main street. So that's why EDC was interested in it. And Stacy is the chair of the EDC, has been attending, whatever, the small town meetings, and the middlesex chamber of college on economic development, and this is a big issue with them. So it's an interesting approach, I don't know if they're going to present it to the select, I don't know where we're going to go with this, but it does calm the traffic problem, the speeding problem, and it does generate revenues.
I think that is...
I'm not sure it generates revenue, I don't think the state, and Steve will take over on this one too.
It does, I don't have the facts in front of me, but the police chief, the middle town...
I think they have a different structure than we do, Steve will take over.
So one of the problems with this is that the equipment isn't free to purchase the equipment, right? So basically, what happens is, there's a monthly fee with the program, you have to buy, you have to purchase the program, and you have to purchase all the equipment, and you don't see any income from that for an extended period of time. And there's a service charge associated with it too. So it's not just, oh, hey, look at all the money you got. And then, by the time that the company has recruited all the money that they've charged the town, everybody knows that the speeding cameras are there, and everybody slows down. But you still have to incur the service charge, and the monthly fee, and X, Y, and Z. So it seems like a great idea, but definitely, if that's somewhere you want to go, more research is definitely needed.
Mr. Smith used to explain to me that there is a thought in society that when a policeman or a constable writes a ticket, comes to the town, it does not come to our town, says Mr. Smith, which is why he was resistant or refused.
Years ago, they changed it, so every ticket that's written in each municipality, something like ten dollars from the fees, right? Because there's, there's different portions of money that's within the ticket, right? So ten dollars from the fee goes to the town, that's it.
Do we get those dollars? I don't recognize, I don't remember seeing those dollars.
I never seen them, I don't know where that goes specifically, so.
So anyhow, I'm hurt.
Jackie, you raise it as a...
I was thinking, because on the news, they said the town of Washington has made up twenty thousand dollars so far, on the news. So I just thought it was interesting, I hadn't done any research, other than to Google it quickly, to say that yes, the town does get a little bit of money from it. So it'd be interesting as a way to raise money, spend less time talking about speeding in this town, and do something.
They're hooking up with all, so it is an interesting idea. I believe they said that middle town gets fifteen dollars a ticket.
Fifteen dollars, okay.
But maybe because they're bigger, so maybe Steve said we only get ten dollars a ticket.
My information is old, but it seemed to be consistent with Steve's.
I'd be interested if Steve says something, you can find out where that ten dollars, because I'm assuming you're writing tickets most days, where that ten dollars is, how we get it.
I'll see if that's still a thing, anywhere it goes, I'll see if I can think of it.
Okay.
Hope you work on claimed one.
That's what we need, is to be after your question, how last thirty years worth of tickets?
Where does unclaimed money go to the state, no, achievement, it's sitting there in the street, I wait for it. Town to county.
I'm just curious, how bad of a speeding problem do we have, do we pull a lot of tickets out?
Well, it depends on where, there's multiple complaints of speeding throughout the town. We have statistics that there actually isn't a speeding problem on Main Street, because it's somewhere around ninety-six percent compliance. But elsewhere, there definitely is issues with speed, so.
Based on complaints by neighbors or residents?
Same, observations by ourselves, and our officers as well.
All right, next item, let's go back to last month, where the fire department, this is Dave, Tim, I know Tim is joining you at the table. Dave will remind us of what we chatted about last month, which was the, I constantly want to put T in ladder, ladder.
Did I miss anything?
Did I miss anything? Okay, I constantly...
A lot of trucks.
A lot of D's, would you bring us up to date on what is happening, and is fifty still the right number you wish to chat about?
Yeah, so the quick update is, or we can give a quick reminder. We had some serious structural integrity issues with the ladder truck. Not just, when you say rust, you kind of think of surface rust and bubbles on the paint. This was very severe structural, in the structural components of the truck inside. So it actually put the truck in a dangerous situation such that it actually broke down responding to a call because of that. And we needed to get it repaired very quickly to get it back in service. So a very temporary fix was done, just to get it on the road again. But it's certainly not the full extent of the repair, and it's not completely roadworthy, it really was a Band-Aid, right? And so we had that worked on, and it was done over the Memorial Day holiday. It broke down, we had it towed to downtown Nighting Water Town, which is the company building our new engine. That tow cost was thirteen hundred dollars, and the minimum repair we did, the Band-Aid approach, was eighty-seven hundred dollars. So that was about a ten thousand dollar Band-Aid that was done. But the underlying issue is still there, which is still the severe structural deficiencies in the framework truck. And we have that pulled for forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy. No reason to think that it's going to be anything other than that, they went through it pretty in-depth, and they gave us a regular tool for it. And so, right now, we've let them know that yes, it's going to be done, and I believe they, and they ordered some of the components.
I don't know if they did, they were told to go ahead and get started with ordering the components.
But we haven't actually brought it up yet, we haven't done, we're waiting for them to get the components in, in stock, and then they could tell us, okay, bring it up. And it's very likely that this truck is going to be out of commission for a month, possibly two months. And you know, that's our ladder truck for any type of high-rise, whether it's a school, or some of the buildings downtown, emergencies. You know, we used it at the fire, at the transfer station, I think that's where it parked, a couple of weeks ago. And while it's out of service, we're relying on other towns that have ladder trucks to bring in their apparatus, if necessary. Hopefully, it won't be necessary, but that's why we have mutual aid. So, but this is something that's going to be done, it's just, they actually haven't taken it out of service to do the repair of that.
And your quote is forty, you just said, but you mentioned that fifty is the number you're looking for.
So fifty is the entire repair, if you include the ten thousand that's already been done, the Band-Aid approach has been done.
The eight thousand seven hundred.
Yeah, eight thousand, seven hundred. So that was not charged to last year's budget?
It was, it was charged, but at the last meeting, it was said it was not, and those bills were not paid, but that was not the case, those bills weren't paid.
Yeah, I saw it.
So it was paid, okay.
So there's the balance, which is what we expect by the estimate, forty thousand, seven seventy, forty one thousand, that's what we...
That includes the towing charges as well, that includes the towing charge?
There won't be a towing charge, because it's, if it didn't break down, we're actually going to drive out there.
Well, I'm going to pass, it was towed away, and that was covered in last year's budget.
And so was the eighty-seven hundred dollars, it was now going forward, it's forty thousand, seven seventy.
Yes, insurance doesn't cover any of this, towing, nothing?
No, it's just like if your car breaks down, there's no insurance coverage. Yeah, no, this came out of our, our entire budget.
I said it's over, I saw the budget was over, it was over. Budget that was approved in May, starting July first, has thirty-five thousand dollars for this further rust issue. We have to pick up, therefore, this board would have to authorize an additional amount to cover your job. I was, again, my introduction to the fifty, they would have to authorize additional fifteen. I think you're telling me it's an additional five or six?
Because ten thousand is already been taken out of last year of the Band-Aid approach, right, Tom?
I thought we handed Band-Aid, I'm sorry, I thought we didn't, we're not going with Band-Aid, we're going with the whole thing.
No, you already did that.
You already did that, and that's last year's budget, and it's going forward, which is forty thousand, seven seventy.
And it'll take like two months to repair.
Probably be coming one or two months.
So the expense will be paid in October.
Yeah, October, yeah.
In hopes that when they start doing the repairs, they don't find additional, you know, it's like anything else, they could find additional stuff. So I would hope that we don't nail ourselves down to the thirty-five plus the fifty-seven, whatever, it's a hundred. I think there should be some cushion on that, depending on what they may find.
And I guess I'm sitting here looking for a smarter guy. We got thirty-five in the budget, that's what we can do. Question becomes, does this board authorize a dollar amount tonight? According to Tim's concern, it may be not. If we approve money to go into capital, it stays in capital, comes out of general fund. If we, if that number is not enough, we have to go back and ask, and move more, we have to go to the town. If you change, increase a line item more than once, you have to go to the town. We are allowed, we, the board of finance, can move monies up to twenty thousand dollars in our, so the numbers we're talking about are within our wheelhouse. Like, you'll certainly have to go to the town, even though it's a couple thousand. So the question is, do you go? Do you just want to listen to the stories tonight, or do you wish to authorize moving five, six, seven, ten into capital?
I'm okay with authorizing it, it has to get done.
Why can't you take, use the sixty that they have in their budget now?
Well, do they wish to spend their budget number on this, which means there is a great potential, you will be back later in the year. Saying, we spent all of our money, we need more money, and we can do that if this board remembers. I just, I'm, I'm, I'd like this event to be dealt with, as this event, as intertwining it with...
We did sacrifice some purchases, and if the deputy chief was here, he could give you a detailed report, but we did sacrifice some purchases and needs after this last budget, to pay that ten thousand dollars in repair and tolling, and that those taxes were due, so.
And a compromise, that's what you're supposed to do.
Right, so that's what we did, so, I mean, starting out, I'm not in favor, in favor of taking the money out of our current year budget, but it's not...
I tend to, I'll agree with that, because it's not a maintenance budget, like, every time you break tires, that's maintenance, that's, you can expect it, you can budget for it, repair for it, when you have a major breakdown on a capital asset, like a ladder truck, it's, you know, two and a half million dollar piece of equipment to replace. I tend to think that capital budget is probably where it's going to be, it's maintenance.
That's correct, it's not the maintenance budget. All right, what do you want to do, do you want to authorize monies now, or wait for, given the numbers accurate, one, October, and we have the exact number by then?
How much money are you asking to authorize?
Well, up until a couple of minutes ago, I was asking for fifteen, right now, I'm asking for five thousand, five, something like that. But if we wait to the dollar, it's actually in, we would know that number, so it would be in, in the range, you wake up to know it. Five, six thousand, seven thousand dollars, and I think we may be doing that. Do we wait till October, or we can do it now?
I would prefer to, because one stop repairs, and we wait till we have an exact amount, because I'm not comfortable authorizing twenty thousand coming out of capital, when you only need seven.
As long as the board understands, I'm sorry, I shouldn't...
No, it's not that, I've really done it.
No, as long as the board understands in a creed, full-heartedly, that the truck needs to be repaired, and it's as easy as at your meeting, authorizing, say, it comes in at, you know, sixty-two hundred dollars more needed, and therefore, it's voted on, agreed on, and above the bill is paid, I say wait. I mean, we've already got thirty-five thousand to get the vendor started. If we get invoices for materials, and some labor to get started, that final balance certainly could wait, is my opinion.
But I would recommend and request that if you think it's going to be more than seven, you come back as soon as you know that. So we don't ask supplies, and I'm pleased with the public's opinion.
Basically, they're running the problems, we would definitely...
Okay.
So you have the ability to approve the repairs at the repair shop?
Right.
And even if the bill came in, in your budget, you have sixty thousand, so even if the bill came in before we met, and you had to pay it, it wouldn't stop you from paying it, and then you have the exact amount.
Keep going. All right, what's your...
So just for the minute, so we're saying yes, that you can not have the repairs up to the forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven, and we'll approve that amount in October, or whatever you thought was still, but you do need to come back to us if it's more than that, as possible. Okay, we'll sort of say, if that's what you want to do.
Just for my own clarity, they have sixty thousand, they have the authority to go ahead and repair it within their own budget, right? So they don't really need our approval of anything.
You are accurate, although my thought is to keep that project out of their normal maintenance work.
Well, that would be, at that point, you'd come back to us and say, the bill was fifty thousand, and do you approve the issue? I'm just trying to make sure.
Again, I'm taking this project and wanting to finance it all by itself, standalone, as opposed to having it intertwined into their maintenance budget.
I think what would get sticky is if we were to pull some money out of the maintenance line to offset that repair. Putting money back into a line is where it gets difficult.
That's working, so the conversation would be, let's make it up next May, Tim comes in and says, the board's got my maintenance budget, and we started writing, writing, we didn't know anything about it, et cetera, he says, but you told me I could do it, to fix the truck. It's a conversation we've had before, but it, I would like to keep them separate to avoid that conversation. All right, excellent, I like it, if the board of finance is happy, excellent work. All right, next item on our agenda, it's let's talk about timing of financing. At the last meeting, we had Mark Chapman from Muni Sort, Stat, Muni Stat, an odd name, say odd. But he chatted with us about us pursuing financing for, let's call it three of our projects, three projects. I want to do four budget, our four projects, Firehouse, two different fire vehicles, and now a loan. We need to finance all of them. The concept that Mark puts forward to us is that as we needed those dollars, we would go into the market and issue a short-term market. We would, as we needed more dollars, turn that first loan over into a second loan, and we would keep paying interest only, and since we're borrowing for a short period of time, that interest should be relatively low. Eventually, we would accumulate a large amount of money we have borrowed, we would then take that and move it into a large, long-term financing, and issue in the bond, into the bond market, or we would go with the USDA or a bit or something, some permutation of those. Now, so I like that, we have not got a chance to say how many of you like it. Here's an alternative that we've talked about. We could issue a lease right now for the brush truck and the payload. I received last week, not all important for the conversation, last week, a proposal from a leasing company that would lease those two vehicles for, the proposal they gave me is seven years, I think we can push it to ten, at an interest rate of about five point two percent. That would require us to, I think we can play with this, but... That would require us to, I think we can play with this, but I would think that would require us to put about a hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget. So, I offer to you, here's something we will be doing with Mark. Or I can get your money in about, uh, three or four weeks to pay for these two items. My recommendation, stay with the issuing small bonds in the future. So, we need a chat about that. If we do marks, he said we could get into the market within ninety days. Ninety days is three months, it's a bit of a time. Uh, my concern is we do not at this moment yet have a finance person. When that finance person arrives, she will be extremely busy. Our last finance person left March, April, something. There's a lot of work to be done in addition to getting the audit. That new person will be very busy very quickly. And to put a offering memorandum on top of her plate could take time. Carol has shared with me a conversation, and if I don't do well, she'll take over. The Firehouse committee thinks they're making progress and will have a much better indication of where they're going in October. I think we could plan to have a bond issue in October with more knowledge on what the Firehouse may need for cash. So, if you are, I'm finishing, you don't have a chance to talk here. If you're tolerant, my recommendation, go with the one-year, the Mark Chapman type thing. And these two, the payloader and the brush truck, need to be purchased immediately, to pay for relatively quickly. That would mean we would have to ask the town to let us to take dollars, about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of our surplus. And be reimbursed when we did the financing in, I'm making up October, October, so. Anyone have any thoughts? I'll give you, I'll finance them right now, we'll have money right now, or we're going to have to wait for, fill up so many parts. I think I'll come in lower, five point two.
How soon, how soon is the brush truck going to be done, Tim? Another month?
No, it's further out than a month, I, I don't know exactly, but it's.
No, I'm just trying to, because Bud's saying it's going to take ninety days if we go March way.
I was just going to try to get that answer.
It's, when I say ninety days, we could see, and if I put it out there, it seems to be brush truck, fit in without capital.
Yeah, I think so.
For quicker, which is why I always to do it, pay for it, cut open our surplus.
The brush truck. How much? Three twenty-four, we've already made a payment of.
Say that again, Tim.
One. I don't know, I'm going to go, it's going to take ninety days, I'll apply for it tomorrow. That Mark does start with you on that.
I haven't got anybody to do the job.
Mark can do it?
We need an internal accountant. It's got to be, it's riddled with all our historical accounting. Yes. Man, I thought I could do some of it, but you just need another captain who has all this.
So the five twenty-six would come out of surplus now, instead of as a barrel?
Be reimbursed.
Correct. And will it all into a short-term note?
Correct, yes, probably less than five percent, which is, oh, yes, much more beneficial than. Yes, if, if a seven-year note is at five, uh, I'm assuming the one-year note.
And the five twenty-six is just to pay for the brush truck?
No, the brush truck and the.
Payloader.
How much is the payload?
Payload, I've been having conversations with Eric about two fifty.
So does that not wait the ninety days?
Okay.
Could the payloader not wait for the ninety days?
They can use the payloader tomorrow.
Yeah, I think she'll every day they ride down the road.
So, so we already paid one seventy-five for the brush truck. Correct, one hundred and forty-nine thousand left for the brush truck, plus two fifty for the payloader. So, so that's, uh, three ninety-nine.
Well, remember, we reimbursed, we reimbursed ourselves, so we're paying for the whole brush truck. Which is literally two sixty or something, isn't it? Two something?
Three twenty-four.
Three twenty-four.
Let's do that, it's case to five fifty.
If you had one seventy-four to that time, I think.
Yeah.
To your, your, not if you had one seventy-four.
We're going to reimburse ourselves.
We've already put down on it. I think that gets us to five ninety.
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah, yeah.
So, what is the one forty-nine due for the brush truck?
I think that delivered.
And the estimate, delivery? We're around the first of the year for one hundred and eighty right now.
All right.
So if January one to one forty-nine, the payloader, when is that due?
Eric, Eric was working on it.
He's working on it right now, and he tells us, you have to be sitting in the room. He tells us that he's sitting a lot right now, so when he starts to go, it's ready now.
So that's more of an immediate two fifty?
Yes.
And it's not custom or anything, what the, the brush truck has to be.
So realistically, timing on the payloader is probably.
Do you want to tell me this?
Yes, if we move money out of surplus, we'll have to do that immediately.
I was just trying to understand how much is, how much cash we have to spend by the end of the year.
Well, you and I are actually going to meet between, do you explore that a little bit?
Go ahead, we have more conversation.
Yes.
The pay, the payment we could probably pick up, you know, a couple weeks, a week.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's not like Tim's the customer, but it's sitting, it's sitting, it's sitting at the dealership.
So that might be more than the longest expenditure made, could be.
Yeah, if, if the money was there.
Plus or minus a couple of months.
Could be, thoughts, Board of Finance, thoughts? Want to immediately finance it? Or should we take it into the market and then October?
I, I think we wait October number, we still have to understand the new fire truck. What's the payment schedule on that? And is there any expenditure on fire between now and end of the year? And bundle all those together.
That's exactly, uh, yes, that is exactly. Hopefully, with a little bit more time, we'll be able to answer the questions. All's I offer to you, I'll finance your payloader and brush truck.
But do we need to finance brush truck now, because that's going to be until first of the year?
No, you're not talking about first of the year for brush truck.
I thought you said, yeah, hopefully within ninety years, oh, okay.
January first.
But the, the engine is six hundred and fifty-something thousand, but the chassis is February-ish delivered.
That's for the brush truck?
No, the engine.
Well, I thought we were talking about the brush truck.
We are talking about the brush truck.
Yeah.
We got six hundred and fifty-something thousand in February due for.
Oh, yeah, that is exactly, that is.
Yeah, we have.
That's correct, we want to talk about that right now. Well, you and I are going to go about it, Tim. If we were doing a financing in October, we should certainly put that into our first round. So we pick up a lot more flexibility by doing these one-year notes. So it goes back to asking the town to allow us to pay for, well, we can tell. Uh, we can tell Eric to hold off on his payloader and we'll put the money in just simply, just we'll pay for the rest of the, the brush truck.
I thought the payloader was on its way out, maybe it is.
It is.
Current payloader is way on the way.
So that's like an immediate need, isn't it?
Uh, selectmen take that one.
It has been an immediate need for a while, it needs a lot of oil, so that's environmental enough and good shape.
Probably save the issues too out there.
Yeah, they, they put a lot of maintenance in.
So can we go into surplus just to pay the payloader right now and then? Wait until the brush truck? Right.
We can do that.
Since there's not an immediate need.
Actually, if you wish to hold off on the payloader, we should not go into the surplus for the payloader. Once we do this financing in October, November, we can put it there, we can push it off. It's been trailing, it's been trailing oil since what, nineteen, nineteen-nine? So, yes, exactly, I made that. Uh, that was a definite being number, that shouldn't be, but yes, we can wait for all of it.
So it's a gamble that it'll be okay until October?
Correct.
That's the same thing we, we've talked about with the fire trucks. You know, you start off with something small and it keeps going, that payloader's on its last leg.
How much have you spent on repairs of the payloader?
Too much, I think they put a new entry in last year.
Now. From our surplus.
They put a hydraulic valve body in it, not too long, I think that was ten or twelve thousand, I don't remember exactly. You know, you could have thrown good money at, bad items.
Now, it's more than what we had the authority to approve. Do we have any, any of the county incoming out at all?
No, I have anything scheduled, but we can certainly do that.
Yes, okay.
So the two fifty finance committee can't approve that, has to give that, it's like.
Two fifty is what, well? Well, two. We'll get an estimate from, all right, from what he wants, and we will take that number to, uh, county.
And what happens to the old payloader, does it go, does it get sold for scrap?
I think a little bit of museums, I don't know. And we put it paraded. Excellent, I don't know.
Probably decorated for the holiday.
I just will put it on the auction block like you did with the blue cars.
I'm sure.
Oh, really?
So you do get some income from old used machinery?
Yeah, not much, a couple.
Couple thousand dollars?
Yeah, I don't have that.
So you're not going to leave it on the ground, you're going to pick it up and you see it there?
Put it on a trailer, bring it out to Chabonie, that's right.
Scraps up right now.
That's exactly, and it's a John Deere he wants to buy. I thought John Deere had to be green, but I guess when you do, it's yellow, it's yellow, all right, so. All right, folks, we are, I need a, I need the business to show that there was a motion to take to the, a town meeting.
So let me read what the motion I've written, should say?
Okay, yes.
Um, there's a recommendation to go to a town, move approximately two hundred and fifty-five dollars from surplus to buy a payloader until financing can be secured for all three items in October.
Estimate October, but yes, later in the year, perfect.
Later in the year.
Yes.
Okay.
So when do you anticipate the town meeting?
So I made the motion, we need a second before we discuss it.
Well, uh, I'm going to let you answer that one question, but Eric gives you a number.
The two fifty is confirmed?
I said approximately.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I was, I was just wondering if he didn't get, it's not a lot, so.
He's, he's, he was pricing, he was talking about.
Yeah, he told me, it's been out pricing.
Yeah, so I think he doesn't, you know, he got a few prices and.
I'd say things sooner or better, as, and they keep saying we can grip the oil for a long, long time.
So, if it's more or less, does this motion cover, that we don't have to come back to you and have any votes in?
Well, that's my thought.
You can send up two or something.
Okay, okay, so. Excellent, up two, three hundred.
And?
No more than three hundred, but the expectation would be much lower.
Up to three hundred, yeah, three hundred, okay.
That's a few minutes.
From surplus?
Out of surplus.
To buy the payloader to pay?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the first, so you made a motion?
Thank you, I'll second it.
Okay, it is up, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Sending the request to pay for the payloader, the first truck, which will then be reimbursed. Which means that we need to do some wording in that authorization. Excellent, thank you. Only because we're on the subject, we're flying, we're putting all of you in this, we're flying a little blind at the moment. We left June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four with two point nine million surplus. And because we do not have a finance person, I do not know exactly what we have left. We told the town, we're going to spend about two hundred thousand. And when we get to the budget at the end of the, the meeting here, I don't think we'll have the surplus. So, I think there is adequate amount in surplus to cover all of these transactions. I just don't know what that number is. So, you don't have faith.
Well, well, it's starting Monday, so.
Can we choose how many times, Chris?
Perfect, perfect. Um, next item on the agenda, I sent to all of you a copy, is it a copy? I sent to you a letter that John Chilllock, who's chairman of Chester Board of Finance, sent to his Board of Selectmen discussing a meeting that he had with Hudson Campbell, who was the chairman of the Essex Board of Finance, and me. Uh, the purpose of the meeting was, to put context, Chester was hit hard by the regional school district. The number that seemed to be used, a million, whether it's a little over, a little under, but they took about a million dollars. John, in his defense, does not like being taken by surprise of that magnitude. I think we kind of debuff that. John went out and did a lot of research, found out that Regional District Thirteen, which is Middlefield and Durham, reached an agreement, petition, the state is a better word, State Department of Education, to allow them to change how the A, uh, average daily attendance, A D A. He's just calculated. Average daily membership, A D N. Okay, got it, I knew it was A D. How is calculated? It has, it is calculated for us, has always been, you know, like thirty years here, on a annual basis. Historical annual to allocate in the future. Um, Regional Thirteen has now got a rolling five-year average. Um, which, if you remember your statistic classes, provides some stability. Uh, and smoothes out and gives you better education to look at trends. And you would not get this way swing up and down. With that said, they had a million dollar up, but we had a down. There is a, there, there's, you can, there's benefits to both sides of this. Although we have settled, we have saddened, uh, the high and enjoyed the low. But anyhow, John wants to send a, has drafted a letter, which I've asked him to hold back. He wants to send a letter to each of the three first selectmen to set up a committee. Two members of the Board of Finance from each town and a member from each town's original Board of Education to discuss the issue of smoothing. I have put in some resistance, seems like too big of a task, too early. I would like to see, we should be able to have some indication from historical data and pro forma, what effect this actually would have. But, so all's I offer to you is a news story. This is going on, uh, as we get to more information, and we'll be back.
I would like to propose that while these meetings are going on, Deep River discusses that Chester and Essex. It's about time they started to reimburse us a little bit for having the schools in our towns, using our police department, using our roads as part of this conversation.
Well, I'm going to, at least, what are your last of words? There's big conversations going on with each of the school. This is a relatively small issue in a bigger conversation. Um, and I don't know what more to take out of that. Very resistant to set up a big committee to deal with a relatively small piece. But I will provide more information as I get to more information.
I, I understand Chester's hard this year, but we've.
We've been there, we've had it.
We've had it hard.
We've been there, that's correct.
And Chester's going to get hit again hard next year, according to the figures. Um, I respect them for trying to do this, but nobody really thought about Deep River when we were getting nailed.
That's what I was going to say.
You know, and we are a region, we all try to look together, but now when you're in frying pan, they want us to, on this level, things off. And they hurt us and our makeup.
And that's what I was to say.
And that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, and you should be concerned. Um, John tells me that if you look at forward-looking participation, Chester takes on more and more. I would have thought Deep River would be taking on more and more, but they said, so, yes, it's trying to deal with an issue that he has going forward. He should be complimented, and I just want to make sure it's not.
If I remember, at last year, we went up a million, right? Was it last year? That we got.
Oh, yeah.
Deep River.
We went up a million, I guess.
Yeah, and, and obviously Chester was silent.
Yes.
So, right, right, so if we corrected this, all we'd be doing is hurting ourselves.
Correct.
So to your point, if anything, you look backwards, and if there's any change that's made, you would have to compensate the towns that got lax in the previous years in order to repair.
Correct.
We've always had Essex pretty much stable.
And to your point, Essex is relatively, while interested in the conversation, not particularly enthusiastic.
And, and.
My interpretation.
Chester might have ridden the spice, but now, you know, a couple students here or there have set that budget crazy. Thousands of dollars and, um, like I said, we, we were in the frying pan for several years, since I've been here. Nobody cared about us, you know, I don't want to be that way, but we have to think about Deep River first.
So there couldn't be any advantage to us to be involved in this?
Why do you stay involved in the conversations? I mean, smoothing has an appeal.
Well, I mean.
Well, imagine they're spiked and now they want to kind of, like, average everybody out, let's say. So then we're all down here and we're, maybe Deep River's here. So they're going to pull us up, somebody's bringing us down, you know.
And that's, that's why I'm sorry.
I think it's worth studying, if you look at the back, if you look at the past, you look forward. And then based on that, you know, obviously, we don't want to hurt ourselves, but, but once you get the data. And we make.
And does this also include talks about utilization, where all three systems get together and become one?
No, that's what I was going to say, that's a whole other topic, it's the whole restructuring piece of it. This is just the A D N, who's talking.
Correct. And you also get into, at least your comment, the thoughts, that Chester and Deep River joined together, I mean. joined together, I mean, we then started having two ADMs or something, I don't know, it's, it's interesting, it's worthy of pursuing, I think, when we get more information, we can talk about amongst ourselves without having a gigantic committee.
They're talking about Deep River having the least number of students as hundreds on, but Chester actually have more students.
What John is saying, at least that's what he sees in the day.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty true.
Which I'm surprised, I actually would have thought that Deep River having a lower property value would have attracted more younger families.
According to John Stack, that is the case, so it sounds like it's conflicting information a little bit right now, too.
So what I've learned over time is, a forecast is, is inaccurate the next day, so it's worth studying, just in case that forecast changes.
Yeah, good point, good point.
Because they give out the numbers at a budget time, for next five years, and, all right, they may be four students high, or three students low, but those students can set your budget in various directions.
All right, more to follow on that, unless anyone wishes to call it to a close. The last item on the agenda, Tara, our accounting assistant, sent to everyone on Friday, two financials files, okay? One of which is for last year's, ending on June 30, and the other is the file, I think, is this year, we can boldly suggest it is not worthy of a spending much time on either of those. Certainly, the file for this year, we've only had 20 days, I think you sent it Friday, it's about 18 days, it does not, it does not deserve our attention. Last year's is, let's start the conversation, it is interesting. We just, we're in the process of contracting for roads, which were paid for for last year's budgets, it's not in there. The school dollars are not officially pulled out of there, the grammar school has a surplus of 122,000, which is not going to work. There's always confusion with salaries at the end of the year, somebody gets paid half of the last budget, half of this, so I suggest it is not worthy of our attention. If you did look all the way at the bottom of that sheet, you would see that there is a surplus of last year of 1.4 million dollars. Do not anticipate that. I do believe there will be a surplus, which is right going to last month. I believe we will have a surplus. We told the town we would have to, there would be expenditures exceeding revenues, I do believe there will be a surplus. I cannot, without a finance person, give you any indication how big that is, other than we will not need to grow up on the surplus. That's my best guess.
If you ever add me to that, I will tell that distribution.
This one?
Yeah.
Oh, you're one of them, so, oh, sorry. Don't come out, you should be going out.
Do you want to these two hard copies of this?
This is last year's.
I sent them on to you.
Yeah, I have, I've got them all printed at home. Is there a way I can get copies before the meeting?
Sure.
In the town hall?
Staple to some of my second-hand copies, I think.
That's all right, I don't need it now.
Didn't you get, you get, you're on the...
I can't print.
You can't print?
No.
I certainly encourage them down here, and, we're burnt.
Do you need some hard copies to take?
She's, she's gonna burn.
Okay.
No, I'll go send you a card, I'll go take them.
I'll go print another copy for you, too.
Cool.
And the last item on our agenda, I forwarded to you an email that Catherine sent to me, and I to all of you, and promised we would chat about meeting times. Now, I'm going to be bold, start a conversation, and while I had limited feedback, the feedback I got, there is very limited support for moving our meetings.
Our problem is, that only gives us 30 minutes for a board of selectmen meeting, and if that's not enough, we're finding frequently over the last six months, we've been...
What I did get as feedback is, why don't you move your meeting?
So I did some research of other towns, and as we're kind of, we're in a select meeting, Essex needs five million, maybe, like, a really big is a five, yeah, Chester's is at six, so I just wondered, is it possible to move it to six?
We've been six thirty for our budget, we're at seven thirty, and we moved, we moved to seven, so...
And I'm just thinking about you all, because...
I have no problem with that.
I'm just trying to get you all earlier, too, babe, that's all.
We can talk...
It's just, we can't handle it, darling.
No, you're right, I agree.
No, I think the universe is a jerk, part of the, our meetings, but we do get late as it is. All right, with, unless we wish to continue that conversation?
So six here, five there.
We have to talk to Carol, but I have no problem with it, she has no problem with it.
Good.
So what we do at town meeting?
No, he's excellent.
Just your comment. So we will hold our meeting at seven.
At seven or still?
It was seven.
Would we wait for Carol for you folks to go, or is that something we can say about that?
We have to have a first, we discussed this, you know.
Captain's making a more passionate...
What?
I'm making a more, can I say?
Well, there... Well, it's staying.
We'll say we're persuaded.
I was gonna hear the ass.
You gotta have a little levity.
Just don't change today, I now know it's Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday. Second, fourth. This month was tough, because the first was, first month was on Tuesday, so meetings are more early.
Yeah.
Hey, Jim. Jim, now Mr. Guck with us, looks like he decided, after, we will do it in the last round, I apologize.
That's, that's a big piece of the mission.
Uh, yes.
Fire truck and...
And, yes, and if they have better information on the Firehouse.
Yeah, I missed the meeting.
Are they not, now, if they think they'll have better information?
We're not meeting over.
Whether they go forward or not?
I'll ask my officer on, I'll just see any of them inside, they still have no phones.
Yes, yeah.
But I don't know what happened to this guy.
I wanna see some quick pictures.
Carol just told me they filed it out, that they get bids, and they'll know yes or no. So if the pitch comes fitting to the current approved, then we have to decide whether to go back or, or what. But certainly we'll affect Pat's report.
Correct. So my thought is, if you propose your meetings to start after the selectmen's meetings, then you have some wiggle room, because you can always start your meeting after, so if you say you're starting at seven, you can always start late, you can't start earlier. So FOI, you wouldn't be able to start earlier, but...
Well, our request of you is, can you start earlier?
I can start earlier, but that was just a way around that, if...
Very, very good.
The town, so they can, they always just would say seven o'clock, or immediately following board of selectmen meeting, so then you have that wiggle room, that way your report, instead of starting in there, which again, you're then, you're a whole...
And while we start in there early, we would like to be on the ground a little bit, so...
But I'm fine at six.
Yeah, I'm home at six.
And then we'll change ours to seven or immediately following the board of selectmen.
Okay, that's true. Earlier than seven, but after, later if the board starts.
It's every one of our meetings, and those are all special meetings, has to be very posted.
For the year.
You can't change that?
Actually, that would be true for your meetings as well.
I'll...
You gotta, you gotta post them for the year.
That's fine, I mean, we'll figure it out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
We'll try and meet next...
Ken's not getting any proper...
I'll come on later.
Good point.
I have a lead time, I'll go check out the...
I'll play from next week.
What happened to the road?
The committee, Fire Committee.
The following, so...
With the exception, I'm going to remind you, we have technology. Well, you're driving, you can be along. Well, I bet you might be one to drive one of the big things and talk, I don't know, I'm talking to my phone.
What was that? What was that?
I don't know where you're driving. Tim has his house on wheels, so, there's better to drive than not drive. Everyone remember, Board of Finance does not meet in August, unless there's a emergency. All right?[1751.52]